Call this meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. This is Porter County Board of Commissioners meeting Tuesday, September 1st, 2020. We'll move right into the consent agenda. Melanie, please outline the consent agenda.
Approval of payroll, August 21st, 2020. Approval of claims, August 13th. August 20th, August 26th, 2020. Approval of minutes, August 11th, 2020. Treasurer's monthly report filed, July 31st, 2020. Ways and measures, monthly report, July 16th, August 15th of 2020.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. We have a motion and a second for the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. Okay, we're going to go into announcements here. First of all, I'd like to introduce someone new to the county here. Last, about a month and a half ago, our IT director, Matt...
Don.
Don. I know it, Matt Welson. Don Welson is retired from the county. Don was 71 years old and decided it was time to hang up the IT robe. And when he gave us that, his final answer several months ago, we started searching for a new IT director. And we ended up interviewing, meeting quite a few people, had a lot of outstanding resumes. And we interviewed and offered the position. And he accepted it. And we're just really tickled to start the new career and the new path of IT here at Porter County. Eric Serrano, why don't you come up? Just sort of introduce yourself. Give us a little bit about you and introduce you to the public.
As you said, my name is Eric Serrano. Been in IT for over 20 years. I've been a director previously. Primarily, a lot of my experience has been in the consulting arena, all with managed services. So I have a good feeling for, you know, the kind of costs that get outsourced to those types of organizations. And I feel like that's a pretty big value that I can add as far as cost savings to the county. And I also have some experience within the cybersecurity realm as well. So I hope to bring up the security posture of the county during my tenure here as well.
Yep. And I know the cybersecurity part of your resume and that, I know, was one that was very important to this board because I know in today's world, we're getting hacked almost daily. And so having that first line of defense and upping our game on this end. And I would like to point out that Don and the IT department that was here before, they sort of hold that line for a long time and did an outstanding job. So you have some big shoes to fill. But we're here to help. And good luck. And if you need anybody, need anything from this office, I know that's who you report to, let us know. But good luck and welcome aboard.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Jim. Yes, Mr. Biggs.
The commissioners will be dedicating $10,000 annually to the, for the maintenance and management of the Zona property. The commissioner, several months ago, submitted an MOU to the Parks Department for the purpose of them taking over the management of their property. Back in the late 90s, when the Zona family approached county government, they approached the Board of Commissioners. And the Board of Commissioners, at that time, accepted the property, of course. It's 92 beautiful acres. And it was submitted to us as a wildlife preserve. Since that, since that time, it's kind of developed into more of a wildlife sanctuary slash preserve slash park. And that's not, that's not necessarily a bad thing, or it's not a bad thing. It's just because, you know, we're allowing the public, public to come in there and experience the property. We've had to put trails in there. We, there's been a bridge that volunteers constructed on the property to get, get across the swell that's located on the property. But there's, the Parks Department has stepped up and they, and they have put a portable bathroom out there. Trash has to be emptied. And unfortunately, when we have public that is allowed to come on to public lands, there's an upkeep to that. And the cost of maintaining that property has, has actually gone up over the years. So the property is going to be, is going to be moved over to the Parks Department, who is better structured to manage properties such as this type. And the commissioners are going to appropriate $10,000 annually for that upkeep.
Good?
Yep.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, we'll move into commissioners' portion of the agenda here. We have a, we have a request to approve COVID reimbursement claims. And Scott, why don't you give us a little, little bit of history of what that's entailing?
So the COVID reimbursement claims that the auditor has dutifully put on the, on the agenda to be approved is the COVID-related expenses to be reimbursed through the CARES grant. There's been quite a bit of work happening on getting the CARES grant reimbursements together. The auditor has been the clearinghouse for that. The auditor has also been the one putting together the reimbursement requests. I know we've sent our first set out, and this would be our second set of reimbursements or requests. So Vicky, if you want to talk about the number a little bit, but at the end of, at the end of this, this goes down to the state to be more, what we hope to be reimbursement for the COVID-related expenses that have been processed to date.
Right. The first round, which we received the check in the mail just yesterday, came to just over 121,000. And this next round is just over $40,000. And it's my hope that as we keep getting the claims built up every commissioner meeting, or just about every commissioner meeting, we will send you the spreadsheet that we use to track all these expenses, as well as the claims that need to be signed. And then we take care of submitting it to the Indiana Finance Authority for their review and approval. And if I could just give you another quick update, we have also received word that the Indiana Criminal Justice Institute grant, which your office was involved with, has been processed and is ready for signature. So I'll have that ready to be signed. And that's a whole different CARES Act pot of money that involves the law enforcement agencies in the state, in the county, excuse me. Also, SBRA just released some new guidance going forward with processing the COVID claims. So I'm working on a document to be presented to you for approval when dealing with, like, subrecipients, other agencies that might want to get a share of the county's 5.5 million. And then lastly, last week, the county council made a decision whereby the appropriations for the COVID expenditures will be coming out of the foundation budget fund. And this is, I think, going to streamline the process, and it's going to expedite the ability to process these claims.
Vicky, real quick, the 122,000 that we just received.
Yes.
What type of claims are those that were, that, that will be appropriated toward?
Okay, these were expenses that were already paid. And they ruined it, most of them were, I don't want to say most, but they fell into primarily two different categories. One was the COVID testing in your budget for the employees' COVID testing. But most of it was PPE.
Okay.
Plexiglass shields, face masks.
Okay.
Sanitizers.
But our testing was, the testing for our employees was covered and reimbursed by the federal government.
Yes, it was. And so we will essentially reimburse your budget for that and all other department budgets that had an item in there as well.
Yeah, just for the record, you know, it always sounds like, well, oh, the federal or state government's giving you money. Well, in order to get this money, you have to outlay the money first before you get the money back. And during COVID right now, it's been very difficult because the money coming in versus going out has been very slow. And so, you know, in order for the county to be able to get these claims, we have to put that money upfront. And that was, I think, what the council worked out last week, that they, we were able to use our foundation money to utilize it to be able to spend the money and put, get the things we need and then get reimbursed back. So that was a big help to us to help streamline the process. And by streamlining the process, I think it gives us more time to also look for other things and, and be mining for this type of stuff rather than having to do with all the procedures and all the other work that, that you're doing now, one by one. So I think that was a lot of work between the commissioners and the council's office. I think that is going to work out very well and Vicky's office as well, too. So thank you.
And also, commissioners, as you know, that the much of that, those monies that were spent for the PPEs were not, not necessarily going here. They were going to area agencies and departments, you know, police and fire, because it was needed and immediately needed. So we were able to step up and do that. We're very lucky.
So thank you. Okay, next up, we have a citizen's appointment to the Porter County Airport Authority. I know we've marketed for that at the last meeting, and I wanted to throw that to the board for action.
I'll make a motion to appoint Bob Paparad.
Second. We have a motion and a second for Bob Paparad being appointed to the Porter County Airport Authority. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. Next up, incarcerated offenders provider agreement. This is an adult and juvenile offenders may be eligible for Medicaid coverage as offered through the FFA program while receiving inpatient services delivered at a medical-approved facility during incarceration and upon release or discharge. Scott, you want to just give us?
Yeah, this is just to make sure that if those, if there is, we do have adult or juvenile offenders that are eligible for this Medicaid coverage, that this allows us to take advantage of that. So that's the purpose behind this offenders provider agreement, is to make sure that anything that the Indiana Family and Social Services Administration, which is the FFA, has in their programs that may be eligible through the Medicaid coverage for these particular individuals that we would be able to avail ourselves of.
This is primarily for medical treatment while they're incarcerated?
Correct.
Okay, so I'll throw that to the floor for action.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for the incarcerated offenders provider agreement. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. Next, we're going to add something to the agenda here, and I'm going to do it at this point here. We've been approached by the Lake Area Conservancy District to apply, having the county, the Board of Commissioners assist in filing for an OKRA grant for stormwater work that's going to be done out of the Lake Area's Conservancy District. Obviously, conservancies or certain districts like that, we have a similar one going down in Collier Lodge, down in Kankakee River. These OKRA grants, these type of agencies, in order to file for these type of grants, the commissioner's office has to be involved and oversee and sign off. And so what we're going to do here today is take some action here to hopefully take some action to get, get this thing moving here. So first up, this is the only thing we vote on, right, Scott? So first up, we have here a resolution. Scott, why don't you just outline what the resolution is for and what we're voting on so everybody has an idea?
The resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Porter County authorizing the submittal of the OKRA Round Two Stormwater Improvement Program Grant Application to the Indiana Office of Community and Rural Affairs. So we have had this looked at by the county stormwater engineer, and we've done all the background on ensuring what we can and can't do with the OKRA grants. And I believe it's all in good form and would recommend approval.
Okay. Any comments or questions from the board? Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Porter County authorizing the submittal of the OKRA grant, OKRA Round Two Stormwater Improvement Program Grant Application to the Indiana Office of Community and Rural Affairs. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. Anything else we need to do on that? I don't think so, because it came from the floor. I think we're good to go. So I know we have some letters and things that we need to sign and do, but we can't do that until we took action. So we'll be doing that after the meeting. So thank you. Next up, we have a proposed ordinance to establish a fund for the Office of Energy Environmental Development Grant.
This is the grant money that the Sheriff's Department received for the hybrid vehicles. So we've approved the hybrid vehicles. This is just the backfill to have the actual fund established so that the money can be deposited properly.
Motion to approve on first reading.
I got to, I got to do a public hearing here. I was just asking. So this, the last one we did was for something else.
It was to approve the cars.
Oh, okay. Okay. So this, everybody's been to our meetings. We have to go through a public hearing for this portion of the agenda. So what we're going to do right now is we're going to suspend the commissioners' meeting, open up a public hearing. We're going to give three opportunities for each side, to anybody wanting to come forward. So first, we're going to, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this ordinance? Second call, anybody wanting to come forward to speak against this ordinance? Third and final call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this ordinance? First call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak in favor of this ordinance? Second call, anybody wishing to come in favor, coming forward to speak in favor of this ordinance? Third and final call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak in favor of this ordinance? And with that, the public hearing is closed, and we resume the commissioners' meeting. I'll throw it to the floor for action. Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for a proposed ordinance to establish a fund for the Office of Energy Environmental Development Grant. This is first reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries.
That's a great application.
Absolutely.
And now we have an MOU. Do we need to have Tony come forward? Or? Tony Stula, head of our 911 in Porter County. Why don't you come up? We may have some questions. This is a memorandum of understanding for the 911 CAD project.
Tony, you can take that now if you're going to speak to us, if you feel comfortable doing it. If you don't want to.
Thank you very much. So Anthony and I have been working, and Tony actually, very much more, on dealing with the much-needed CAD upgrade at 911. CAD is the computer-aided dispatch and records management system that both 911, the Sheriff's Department, the jail, city of Portage, city of Albarazo, town of Porter, town of Chesterton. Everyone is utilizing parts of the entire system that would be within 911. This proposed memorandum of understanding that I'm asking commissioners to approve, contingent upon the other municipalities' approval, outlines that we would be, the county would be responsible for the master purchase agreement, which is an installment agreement with Motorola Solutions. That total contract, which includes the cost of the CAD software itself and 10 years of maintenance, is approximately $4.6 million over the life of the contract. Given that number, the estimated, not the estimated, the installment payment towards the software plus the yearly maintenance is approximately about $505,000 a year total. Of that total amount, Porter County, through its different departments, will be paying approximately $365,000 a year of that $505,000. The remaining portions are then divided out between the city of Albarazo, the city of Portage, the town of Chesterton, and the town of Porter. The original, to back up for a second, the Motorola Solutions product that was selected was unanimously selected by all of the municipalities that were involved through a lengthy process of vetting out the available systems and their availability and how they work with our system and the total cost. And so the, all the parties that are proposed signatories to this memorandum of understanding have been involved in the process from the beginning and have been able to view and have input as to the decision on which system to eventually choose. That has occurred, so this, lots of communication between 911 and the county and all the different departments. So none of this should be of a surprise to any of the parties involved. This is our attempt to get it into a memorandum of understanding so that we can have it clear for everyone as to how we got to where we got and what everyone's responsibilities are yearly. But ultimately, the memorandum of understanding would have the county commissioners eventually approving the master contract. There would be payments due once a year, normally in January or February. The other signatories would need to make payments once a year, then put together with the county's portion, and then we pay this contract through its duration. This memorandum of understanding breaks out all the different portions that need to be paid. So as I said earlier, it's about a $505,000 a year total payment. The county's portion between 911 and the Sheriff's Department and the jail is approximately $365,000. The remaining portion is divided out between the other cities and towns. The total cost for the city of Albarazo is approximately $51,000 a year. The cost for the city of Portage is approximately $59,000 a year. The town of Chesterton is, at this point, opting to make their installment payment upfront instead of having it as a 10-year installment. So they would make that initial payment, and then they would only be responsible for their maintenance moving forward. So their number is going to sound a lot lower, but they're going to be paying, putting almost $165,000 down in this proposal, and then they would be responsible for about $12,800 a year in maintenance. And then the town of Porter's total for the year is approximately $12,600. That does include both the installment and the maintenance. The maintenance goes up approximately 1.6% a year. Of course, it couldn't be an easy round number. It goes up quite far in the decimal point, but it's basically 1.6% a year. So what I would ask is that the commissioners approve this contingent upon the city of Portage, city of Albarazo, town of Chesterton, and the town of Porter's individual boards approving it. And then that way, we could bring it back and officially approve it and approve the contract and move the CAD project forward. I would say from the moment the master lease, the master installment agreement is signed, we're probably 16 to 18 months away from that entire system being built out and installed. Is that fair?
On the long end, yes. We would try to do as soon as possible, but we want to make sure we cover all our bases, dot our i's and cross our t's.
And Anthony, you've had, you know, this shouldn't be any real news to those municipalities.
No.
You've been having meetings. I know you and I met with the town of Chesterton and the town of Porter.
Correct.
So they're, they're expecting this.
Yes.
Okay.
I appreciate your work on this, but I know it was extensive and frustrating.
Thank you.
You too, Scott. Thank you.
It's complicated, so I'm glad that we're, we're making really good headway.
Good to go.
And I'm glad we have an MOU to back it all up, too. So, because over time, people tend to forget, and as people come and go, the MOU will always be there. So that's a lot of what we've been trying to do up here over the last five years, to try and leave a historical record so people can, coming in can figure things out, too. So I also believe there is a CAD upgrade deadline, is it state or federal?
So right now, actually, with the reporting systems for the state, the NIBR's reporting, the National Incident, where all the activities that happen for law enforcement, they want to have a report at the end of the year. I'm actually in communication with the state, trying to see if we can get an extension for that for all the law enforcement agencies within Porter County, because the current system does not provide a report, the thing you use. Otherwise, each entity will have to do handwritten reports at the end of the year, and that could be a long and arduous task for them as well.
For the benefit of the general public, without getting too far into the weeds, because I will cut you off if you do.
Right.
Because it's like watching paint dry when you start talking.
Understood.
Please tell, please tell, tell us, what's the benefit of this, of this upgrade?
So this upgrade will put us into a next-generation 911 system that has more capabilities to integrate with our radio, our phone system. We will have better location information on the responders, officers, in case anything happens. We'll have a map point through Automatic Vehicle Locator, AVL. Also, it will have us a chance to revamp the current system to be more industry-standard, following best practices, and hopefully be a benchmark for other agencies to be following.
That's good. And I believe this is also the last technology piece of what we need to bring our new 911 center to life, correct?
That is correct.
Yeah.
The only thing we would have for this would be possibly fire station alerting by this time. We couldn't even move forward until we moved to an.
Got this done. And I'm sure the fire station alerting will be another lengthy conversation, and there'll have to be a lot to ferret out there next, too. So, because I know some people are very for it and other stations don't want it. So we'll, we'll work through that as we have the rest of this stuff.
This seemed impossible when we started.
Yeah, this seemed impossible when we started and we got this done. So it's good, but.
And a lot of credit goes to you, too, negotiating it out.
Not at all.
It's a big step for all of us.
Yep.
And I think that we're all going to benefit at the end of the day by it. I mean, clearly, we will be. But, you know, people don't, not everybody likes change.
True.
Well, there's no, no part of 911 in today's day and age is simple, straightforward, or common knowledge. And so part of it is just, and especially as the technology continues to increase and change, it's even exceedingly more complicated. So it just reaches so many different directions, and it's becoming more integrated in every other things that we have here. So it's just, it does become quite a hill to climb.
At one point, when I was, when I got here, IT, the IT department wasn't even over 911, which I just thought was sort of interesting from the fact that how difficult and how complex the technology was, that we really, and now we have that under the IT department, too. So I think, I think we were now buying the equipment, but we put the human element and all the other things that run the equipment. We now have that in place to receive the equipment. So we're also trying to do things in the right order here, too. So this, like I said, this is a big move. It's the last piece, and I look forward to getting on with it. So with that, I'll throw it to the board for action. Make sure that is a contingent approval on funding from other four communities. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval of a memorandum of understanding for the 911 CAD project. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Tony.
Thank you very much.
Hang in there.
Thank you, Tony.
Good job. Okay, next up, we got some payoffs here. Franklin Street, 157 Franklin. The first one, two, and three are payoffs. And as you can see on the board there, we have, oh, there, there, there it is, okay. State Line Fire Systems, payout number eight. Midwest Tile and Interiors, payout number nine. Then we have Continental Electric, which is payout number 14. And you can see the amounts on there, so we can, we will vote on one through three together. So I'll throw it to the floor.
Motion to approve the payoffs. And I can do the change order, too?
No, we're doing the change orders separate.
So three payoffs.
Yep, one through three.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for 157 Street, 157 Franklin Street payoffs, items one through three on the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. And then we have Circle R Mechanical. We have a change order number one, or four, sorry, change order number four, in the amount of $2,188. And this is to provide water lines to a CRAC unit in the basement electrical room. All those, so I'll throw that to the floor.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for Circle R Mechanical, change order number four. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post same sign.
Aye, post, same, sign, motion carries. Next up is North County Annex. These are all change orders, so I know that building is getting to the end. I think we're just working on some punch list items and things. Now, we have Mechanical Concepts, change order number two, one, and this is with a credit of $18,185. We're, oh, we, can we do all these together?
We can.
Okay. I'm sorry. Stands, painting and decorating, change order number two, in the amount of $729 for painting some benches in the holding area, prisoner holding area. And we have Portage Township, this is for the Portage Township trustee portion, Kleckner Interiors, change order number one, in the amount of $30,271 to install freezer, cooler, walls, and ceilings in the food pantry, knee walls in three courtroom, ceiling revisions, and corridors, and insulation for spandrel windows. And that, I think, change order would be split between the Portage Township, is that all Portage Township?
That's all of them.
That's all Portage Township assis, trustee. We will pay it like we have on the whole project, and then they reimburse us back. And then, we have Circle R Electric, change order number four, in the amount of $9,342 for some conduits, for courtroom microphones, garbage disposals, break rooms, a lot of miscellaneous things that came up at the end of the project, because it is a, it is a rehab and it is an addition. So, we can vote on all four of those together.
Motion to approve all four change orders for the North County Annex.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, for one through four, change orders, North County Annex and Portage. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post, same, sign, motion carries. Sheriff's Department. We have Agnstrom Auctions. This is a personal property auction contract for surplus vehicles and miscellaneous items. So, throw that to the floor.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, for Agnstrom Auctions, contract for an auction for surplus vehicles and miscellaneous items for the sheriff's department. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post, same, sign, motion carries. Do you have a date on that?
October 3rd.
October 3rd? And is there a time or a place?
I believe it's 10:00.
10:00.
Yeah, and it is October 2nd.
October 2nd at 10:00 a.m., and that's, that will, that's for any sheriff's car, any equipment that would be shared. We do that once a year, so just wanted to get the date out there.
Chief, how many vehicles are you expecting?
14 total vehicles.
We've done our due diligence with our insurance company to make sure that those were taken off. Okay.
All right, yeah, that's, okay. Next up, this is for emergency management. This is, once again, we're here to declare a shoreline disaster emergency and declaration, travel restriction for the Lake Shoreline for Porter County and Lake Michigan.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, second, for an updated shoreline disaster emergency declaration and travel restriction. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post, same, sign, motion carries.
They have done some significant work up there now.
All right.
Couple weeks.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Good. Okay, Excalibur Center, Lori, do you ready?
I wish you could clone yourself today.
It's gonna be a long day. That's okay.
How you doing?
Good.
First of all, we have a request here for transfer of funds. This is fund 4005, $13,000, from 11/20 hourly to account 3980 event expenses. And these event expenses account depleted due to refunds on event cancellations to COVID.
Correct.
So, we're just, the people, we had to give their money back.
Yeah.
And we need to.
Usually, the counterex pretty ironclad, but with COVID, it's nobody's responsibility, so it was no questions asked. There was probably about $20,000 that we were able to transfer, so that was good.
To next year.
To next year.
Yeah. Pushed it out.
Yeah.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, for transfer of funds for hourly to event expense for depleted account due to refunds on cancellation due to COVID. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post, same, sign, motion carries. Then, we have a request for transfer of funds, 4005, for $1,500 from hourly to building liability comp coverage, and this is to transfer funds to cover increased insurance premiums.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post, same, sign, motion carries. Lori, thank you for everything you're doing out there. I know it's been quite a rocky ride and road.
We're getting through.
And this is a self, this is a self-funded venue, so we've been trying to hold her together with sticks and stones and not trying to.
Band-aids.
And band-aids and everything else, but.
Cheap ones.
Yeah, it's been, it's been tough, and I know you've been working with the health department closely.
Very closely.
And it's just very, it's very contentious and just very, a lot of work.
Yeah.
More than normal.
We're doing good.
A lot of details. So, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Facilities, Ray Coy. Hi, Ray.
Good morning. How are you all?
Good, how are you?
Doing good, doing good.
First up, Schindler Elevator, this is for those elevators at Franklin, 157 Franklin. What do we got here?
We have the three-year maintenance agreement for the elevator, just for the maintenance.
So, this is the maintenance agreement?
Yep.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, for the elevator maintenance contract for 157 Franklin Street. It's a three-year contract. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post, same, sign, motion carries. Two, Schindler Elevator Club, this is an upgrade order agreement for floor designation changes on two elevators at 157 in the 157 building. And what this is for is we have two elevators in the building, and what this will allow us to do is to do some, the cab needed to have some floor, we had to change some of the numbers on the floors, because they have five floors and there's only four.
Correct.
So, it's a little confusing, so we're going through and trying to make it easy for people coming to the building, understanding where they're going. And there was some, there was a couple of, some braille stuff in there. It's all ADA. I think there's a lot of handrails and other things that we had to get corrected to make it ADA if we were new.
Yeah, we'll be within code.
And then, we'll be within code, right.
Correct.
So, one of the last things here that we've gotten done. These elevators, when we bought the building, they were about 80% done. So, this is the, we, till we got everybody situated and figured out where everybody was going, then we, we came back and finished up on the elevator here last minute. So, that's before you today.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, an upgrade agreement for the floor designation changes on the two elevators at 157 Franklin Street. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post, same, sign, motion carries. Next up, Aero Pest Control. What do you got here, Ray?
Well, we've experienced some critters in the museum and EMA. The facilities department tried to do it, you know, in-house, but we don't have the chemicals they have, and it's fairly reasonable price to get them just to do it yearly on a monthly basis.
Yeah.
So, that's what we're proposing, is Porter County Museum and the EMA get service on a monthly.
Yep.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, for Aero Pest Control, agreement for Porter County Museum, $60 a month, and EMA, $50 a month. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post, same, sign, motion carries. Then, we have an agreement here for Homewood Disposal. This is an agreement to increase the service at the North County Annex to twice a week in the amount of $190 per month, now that all the construction containers are out of there, and we got everybody moved into the building. We're creating a little more garbage than we were during construction, and everybody's scattered all over, so this is just getting it up to now that the building's open, so.
This will support us and the Portage trustee and the food pantry.
Oh, and that's part of that, too?
Yes.
And that's part of that MOU that we have with them?
Yes.
Yep, okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, Homewood Disposal for North County Annex to increase frequency for garbage pickup. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post, same, sign, motion carries.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Ray. Bob Thompson, Development Stormwater Management, Rezone. Morning, Bob.
Good morning.
This is a rezone. This is second reading. At our last meeting, we had a public hearing. We gave the opportunity for people to come forward, speak against or for, and we had no participants in that. We're now at a second reading.
Motion to approve on second reading.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, Rezone, P2 Parks to RR, Royal Residential, the petitioners, Tara Ketchum. All those in favor, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post, same, sign, motion carries. Yes.
I was unable to attend your meeting last season because misinformation given to me by Melanie Vancy and also upstairs in the board. I came here, I called first, because I was told the meeting was August 4th. I came, and I got no response from anyone upstairs. They told me the meeting was August 11th. I came at 9:30 in the morning, and this young lady told me that there was, the meeting was the 13th. So, I came back on the 13th, and on the 13th, I was told that the meeting was on the 11th, and it had, we were going to a second reading. There are no signs on this property on either County Road 1,000 or 625. There was one sign on July 3rd on County Road 1,000, but nothing on 625, and that sign was completed by all the leaves. The only reason I knew it was there was because I go down the road, and I saw something a little red, and I thought, what is that? I got out of the car, and I'm a senior citizen, and I went down into the ditch, and all the leaves were planted. That was the date of the initial here. This is, there are no signs, no one knows, oh, no. We do not have rural paper delivery. We do not have internet. And I don't have one of those crazy phones. I'm a retired registered nurse of 39 years. Please put your hands up. And I am also a licensed patient at the facility. This has not been handled right. This is recreational property, and people travel 625, 1,000 as a detour, because 231 is closed. So, people don't know what's going on out there. There should have been signs though, until this final hearing, and they're earned. I object strenuously to rezoning this, I want you to give some signs up so people know what's going on. And I would also like to say that, just Nancy, that she didn't know, she was filling in, but I came on the 13th, she said she worked in your office. So, I find it very hard to believe that you cannot give us the proper information, notification. We keep out, I should need to be out today because of this. And it's just annoying that you will not give us the proper information. I have my original letter, but this does not tell us all of the information. If you do that, you need to be put out. The more people out there don't want this, that they won't come out, and you can't go door to door because of the pandemic. So, we have some work to do to give us proper information, and I object to this strenuously. I'm sure you do it right. Thanks.
Thank you. Next up, we have USI Consultants. We have a right-of-way agreement for Bridge 168. This is Brummett Road over Little Calumet River. Bob, what you got going here?
Bridge 168 is Brummett Road over Little Calumet River. The environmental report is going to be submitted soon for approval with FHWA, which then allows us to go forward with right-of-way services. Right-of-way services is the next step according to the end dot procedures for contracts. This is for $32,000, six parcels on that, and then USI will actually do the appraisals and then do the actual contact for the purchasing.
Any questions for the board?
No, motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, for USI Consultants. This is a right-of-way agreement for Bridge 168 over Brummett Road over Little Cal River. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post, same, sign, motion carries. Next up, we have a performance agreement with Red Fish Development LLC for recording of a secondary plat of the preserves, phase two.
All right, this is new. With this development, Red Fish is going through the process of having a secondary plat approved for phase two, so they can get building permits, and this is one of the procedures Mike and about me and I have been working on this particular issue. We do have a maintenance agreement, and I just thought what a great idea to have a performance agreement signed and notarized. This isn't the letter of credit that will be coming later. The performance guarantee basically outlines everything that's out before the consultant as far as this goes. This is good for two years. They got to complete the infrastructure in two years. We'll allow a two-year extension at six-month intervals with a new engineer's estimate based off of the cost of living upgrades it possibly be and everything. So, basically, we're trying to outline everything to the developer right up front, what is expected of them, and what we will do.
Any comments or questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion, a second, for a performance agreement with Red Fish Development LLC for recording of a secondary plat of the preserves. This is phase two. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post, same, sign, motion carries. Next, you got Bridge 98. What do we got going here?
Bridge 98, 600 North over Salt Creek is one of the bridges that were awarded federal funding for construction and construction inspections for end dots fiscal year 2025. We reviewed the letter of interests that came in for this one. We had 10 different consultants submit letter of interests on this. It was quite a return, and we are coming before you to recommend Lock Mueller Group, that we start negotiations with an agreement with Lock Mueller Group.
Any questions of the board?
No, motion to approve.
Second.
We have a recommend, we had a contract for Lock and Mueller Group Consulting Design Services for Bridge 98. This is 600 North over Salt Creek. It's in the city, no, it's not in the city, it's in the county. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post, same, sign, motion carries. And now, for Bridge 1,009. This is Lendberg Road over Salt Creek, and this is in the city of Portage.
This one's in the city of Portage. Lendberg Road over Salt Creek. And on this particular bridge, we, the department received nine letter of interests from consultants on this, so we had quite a group to select from. Again, this is part of the fiscal year 2025 federal funding that we have for this, for construction and construction inspections. So, on this bridge, we are recommending Butler, Fairman, and Seifert.
Any questions of the board? Okay, so we have a contract for consulting and design services for Bridge 1,009, Lendberg Road over Salt Creek. This is in the city of Portage for Butler, Fairman, and Seifert. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
We didn't make a motion.
Oh, we didn't? I thought we did, I'm sorry.
We don't make a motion.
Okay. Got a little ahead of myself there. We have a motion?
Got a second.
Sure. Second. And this is for Butler, Fairman, and Seifert Consulting Design Services for Bridge 1,009. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. All right, that's it. Thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
All right. We have everything? You guys signed? Okay. We're all good? All right, anybody wishing to address this board? Oh, sir, please come up and give your name, your address, and... Yes, sir, right there.
That's good.
Can I get your message?
Yes, sir. Good morning, my name's Fred Martin, I live at eight twenty-two South Regal Lane, Couts, Indiana. How are you this morning?
Great.
All right. I was going to have a fundraiser in Couts. And after conflicts with the Health Department, after, we'll say, conflict with the Health Department, I canceled the event. Unfortunately. It was fundraiser, we're going to have the South County Clovers.
You running for office?
Yes, I am.
What office you running for?
County Commissioner.
Oh, really?
Yes.
All right.
But this event had nothing to do with...
Oh, okay, okay.
This is a totally separate, I did a similar event last year, and I was going to do it again this year. So I filled out the paperwork, you know, I found out, you know, the Health Department said, two weeks prior to my event, they wanted all the COVID paperwork filled out. So I filled it out to the best of my ability with the answers that I knew for sure. And I was honest and said there were certain things I did not know. Two of the big hangups were the exact location of where the four H club was going to have food trailer parked. And I didn't know, there's a special plug needs to be installed, and I didn't know where the club was going to be installed. That was probably the biggest one. The other concern they had was the size of the park and the number of people.
Now... How many people are you going to have?
I don't know, it's a fluid situation.
Oh, fluid.
Because people would come, I, we just got to have musicians play, people come by a sandwich, listen to some music. You know, last year, we may have had a hundred people total. I was hoping for some more this year. But there again, when every other sentence out of the person I'm trying to talk to is, we'll come down there and shut you down. In fact, I was told the Health, members from the Health Department and the county commissioners would come down and shut me down. So whether we're going to have a scene, I just, do I believe you will want to come down and shut me down? No. But there needs to be, I feel, some cooperation. You know, I'm the person, the Couts Park Board does not have a staff, they have a volunteer board and a couple of contractors hired to do maintenance. This is just a simple...
Well, just let me interrupt you in a second here. First of all, the Health Department has its own board, and it has its own meeting. And it has its own governing body. I would think you would know that running for office. But that would be probably where you would want to come to a public forum and talk to them. Because we, you know, we're following the governor's orders, as far as I know, with the Health Department. They have their own separate initiative, they have their own separate board, they have a county public health official that makes all these decisions. And they meet and they have their own attorney, they have their own board, they have their own doctors on that board. I am not a doctor. So, you know, their, their function and what they're doing, and remember, that board too is a volunteer board for our county Health Department.
They have paid staff, correct?
What's that?
They have paid staff.
They do have paid staff, but the board is, I'm just mentioning it because you were mentioning about your part-time board down there. I think, I think the one thing that COVID has done is it has proven that our little Health Department that we've had in this county for years, that basically did some immunizations and some septic permits and, and food, food oversight and restaurants and that. You know, COVID has pretty much stretched the limits of that department to a totally different level than what anybody has ever dealt with. So, you know, I, I'm not going to sit here and defend them because I wasn't on the phone, I didn't listen to the back and forth. But again, the Health Department has their own board, they have their own meetings, and I think that it sounds to me like that's something that you may want to go to that board and sit down and talk to them. And then you can deal with all the people on that board that can make those policy decisions. I, I saw in an article in Indianapolis two weeks ago where there was a public health official in a town down in Indianapolis that accused the mayor of that town sort of influencing what the Health Department did. And so there's outcry from that on the other side. And I think this board, what we've tried to do is allow our Health Department and our health officials run what they're doing down there. So I, I just want to be clear here, where the lines are and who, who are as responsible for what.
What I was told that this was, the commissioners and the commissioners attorney were involved in this as well. That's why I wanted to bring it up.
They have their own attorney too.
So, okay, thank you.
And I don't, you know, I don't, I mean, sometimes when you're, you know, in, in, in the heat of the battle with people, you know, they say things, I don't know, I wasn't there.
Okay. So you don't know, like, certain fees, it's all determined by the Health Department when they try to...
Correct. They have their own board, they're, they're owned, they have their own everything, they're operated. So, so boards like those can't influence them. That's why there is the separation of all this. So, and I know they're, they're, they're walking down the protocols of state and the governor's protocols.
And trying to keep the community...
Well, I understand that. But I was, you know, when they bring in, we'll call the police and as far as I was told by the town that there was no laws or ordinance that's being violated by having this event.
Well, if it felt, if it felt what the governor's mandate says in three point five, if it fit that, then that's their responsibility to make sure that your event fits those protocols.
Right, I understand.
And what I understand, there wasn't a really freely exchange of information on that. And maybe that's where the problem was on both sides, I don't know.
Yeah, because I, I said, I was all for posting the signs, making sure people unmasked, hand sanitizers and all that. But, you know, I say, there, me, I feel there needs to be some cooperation there other than if you don't do exactly as we say, we'll just come and shut you down.
I find it very hard to believe that's what happened, but whatever. Well, you can take it up with the Health Department and you can grind your axe with them.
Okay, thank you, Fred.
Yep. Anybody else? Yep, come on up. Right here is the microphone, give your name, right here, up here, see it? And then there's one above you too there. Just give your name, address, and that's all we need.
My name's Justin Click, and I'm, I live in Hobart, Indiana, and I'm a pilot and a tenant of the Porter County Airport. And the reason where I'm here today is trying to understand this whole appointment of airport board. You know, who gets appointed and why they get appointed and what reasons they don't get reappointed or reapplied or whatever. Because me and a lot of people at the airport have dealt with the board on a lot of issues and a lot of things. And the board we have in place and all the members on the board are great to work with, they understand the airport and everything. And it's been brought to our attention that there's one particular board member that has not been allowed to reapply. And he, we don't really know why, and he does a fantastic job for that airport. He's been out there for twenty-plus years. He's started at the bottom, worked his way to the top. I have never seen any of you guys out at that airport, and I'm out there probably four days out of the seven days of the week. And I fly over three hundred hours a year, I've got, if you guys see an antique, if you see biplanes flying over Valpo, that's me. I'm in the plane. That's what I operate, giving people rides, you know, a big part of the airport. And, you know, to find out that we're losing a member on the board that understands how the airport works and the ins and outs and everything, and to not tell nobody out at Porter County or talk about it or this new guy that's coming along, you know, what are his qualifications? Who is he? We've never heard of him. You know, I don't, I don't know how that works, you know, I'm not a politician, I'm not political or anything, but I would think you'd want somebody at the airport that understands the airport. And, and I'm not alone. There's another guy here that's with me that operates a flight school, that flies thousands of hours of operations out there, same, same deal. And we just want to know, like, you know, well, I guess we're not in the know when the, whatever goes on around here, but it'd sure be nice if the people that operate and use the airport would be involved a little bit with some of the decisions that go on. It seems like it's closed-door things or something.
Bob Poprod is a pilot, and I'm pretty sure he learned to fly at Porter County Airport.
I've never seen him out there and, and...
Well, the way the appointment works is that the airport authority board is appointed by the county commissioners.
Right.
And so, and it's based upon their vote on who gets appointed to the board.
Right, but does anybody come out and ask? I'm just curious, I'm asking how this works, does anybody ask?
I've talked to several people. I've talked to my father-in-law, who's out there all the time.
I know your father-in-law real well.
Well, then you know I'm at the airport. I've talked to Howard Stru, I've talked to several...
I know Howard real well too. It's just, it, it's, it's kind of bizarre, that's all, we're just, we're asking, we're...
All board members serve at the pleasure of the county commissioners.
And when I brought out Bob Poprod to these people, they said that's a good choice.
I mean, I just, it's funny because the flight school and, you know, all of us that are out there operating a lot, I guess the people that are there every day, flying out of there, working out of there, doing stuff out of there, there's a crop duster now, none of us, the people that are using the airport to fly a lot, that are flying, that not just...
But that's why you have a board. The board runs the airport, right?
Right, and the board's...
So are you saying you want to be a part of the board, or you want to tell the board what to do, or...
No, I'm not saying I want to tell the board what to do.
Okay.
But I want to see people on the board that are well-qualified.
Okay.
That are well-qualified, that understand all aspects, not just...
We feel we've fulfilled our obligations. And we did not tell anybody not to apply, I don't know where that's coming from. But like everything else, I'm sure there's a lot of stories and...
Well, and that's why, that's why I came here, and I'm asking because it just seems weird if, if everything is, if the people that are on there and everything is working, why change it or why?
We've been changing boards and players, as elected officials come and go. They have people that they know that they want to serve, that, this happens all the time. So I don't know where the outrage and all this is, I mean, we're very concerned. We got a letter from Kyle Kugler basically saying that, you know, whatever we want to do, it's up to us, and the board feels very strongly about that and, you know, so...
I, I mean, I've just never seen any of you guys around there to talk to.
Why do we have to be out there to make you happy?
It's not about making me happy.
Well, that's what you're saying.
It's about asking people out there what we might want or anything, you know, it's part...
We have been talking to the board members. I, I don't, this, this is, I've, I've been up here six years, I've never had this happen before. This is just odd.
Well, there's, yeah, well, there's a lot of things.
I think you're going to find that you like Bob Poprod on the board.
I'm not saying he's a bad guy or any... I'm not, I'm not even talking, I'm just talking about a shift in something for no obvious reason, no, like somebody didn't let anybody down or somebody...
I didn't catch your first name.
Justin.
Justin, let me try to explain this to you. The board commissioners, when we make these appointments, and the, and the airport board is, is no different. You, you, we may make appointments with somebody who is, who is a, a very seasoned pilot that runs your plane or planes out of there on a regular basis. And then you have other appointments that are, are, say they're more familiar with the operations of county government, its fiscal, you know, its fiscal resources and so on and so forth. We, we appoint people there to represent the general public who is paying for all that out there, okay? That's who pays for that out there, is the general public. And you take somebody like Bob, Bob Poprod, who's got a long history of sitting on the fiscal body of county government, who is probably as capable as anybody in this county to know what the county's fiscal wherewithal is in, in keeping that managed the way it should be. Yeah, I, I, I...
Okay.
Let, let I let you talk when I'm done with it.
Yeah, all right.
And I, you know, it's, it's not important to be, me, I'll be honest, if you've never been in a plane, that's not why I make my appointments. I want somebody to keep an eye on, on that out there to make sure it's managed profitable, profitable, properly, because it is the public who owns it and the public who is paying for it. And I think Bob is a great guy to have sitting, sitting in one of those chairs.
But you guys, is the commissioners appointed the person that is not being allowed to, is not being allowed or not getting reapplied? You guys appointed him to begin with in the first place, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so why the sudden shift, why the sudden change in thought or feeling or anything?
Well, as Mr., as Commissioner Good pointed, pointed out to you, we do that all the time. And guess what? The general public does that all the time with their elected officials. You, you, you know, I, I personally think it's healthy to have, to have, you know, a fresh face and fresh voice on, on these boards periodically and change members out periodically. I think that's a healthy habit to have.
I guess I'll have to see how long some of the other members have been there. I think some of them have been there a long, like a very long time, haven't they?
Yes, yes, yes.
I mean, I'm just, I hear what you're saying, and I do agree, a fresh face in politics would be nice, not the same old people all the time. But like I said, there's a highly qualified individual, not...
I get it. Our, our appointment of Bob had nothing to do with the gentleman who currently has it. I'll, I'll speak for myself. Had nothing to do with it.
It...
I know Bob Poprod, I know, I know of his capabilities.
And I'm not saying...
And I think that he is a good appointment for that board under the circumstances.
Yeah, it just, I found it odd and whatever after working with the board, and the board's been great to work with on some stuff.
And, and I think, as Commissioner Belaney pointed out, I think you're going to enjoy working with Bob.
I just, like I told you, my question was why and, if, not saying, I'm not talking about him or anything, but why the sudden shift in the change and, for a wheel that's going around real good?
That, that, that may be, but that doesn't, you know, that doesn't submit somebody's position on that board, you know, indefinitely. That board is expected to operate as it should. If it doesn't, we, we would have made more than one appointment.
Well, I, I would think if it wouldn't, that's when you guys would come in and shift it or change it. But if it was working good and then to get shifted and changed, that's, that's what I'm saying. That's all that I'm saying is, it was working good, it was a great people to work with.
And I think, I think it will continue to work well.
You know, why rock the boat, I guess? I just, me as a pilot and operator out there, I want to see somebody out there that's on the board, that's operating out of there. I want to see them flying around. There's a ton of planes out there and people...
Well, that's not a club out there, okay? That's why I said it's not important to me that you own a plane and you're flying out of there. The people own that airport. Not the, not you pilots that are flying in and out of there.
But the people making decisions about the airport would be nice if they use the airport also, and I guess...
Well, I think Mr. Poprod would tell you that he periodically uses that airport. I have periodically used that airport. And I've never run into you, where were you at?
Out there all the time, every day.
Well, okay, I'm just saying, I'm just saying that, I, I don't think, and it's, again, it's not important to me as a, as a, as a county commissioner that we're appointing people who actually fly planes out of there. That is not a club out there. That is, that is a county airport ran by the Porter County Board of Commissioners, appointed to those, that the board members out there to help manage. That's what's important to me. The people own it, not the people who are flying in and out of it.
The people that are renters out there owning, right? The people that have hangars and are renters out there?
You, you don't, you, sir, you, you really don't want to get into that.
Okay.
Yeah, there's, we could go, we could talk about hangars out there. I mean, you know, but we won't today, so... I understand your concerns, Justin, but it, it's, you know, we, we have a job to do up here, and we have to make sure that the public's eyes and ears are, that, that they have a seat at that table too. And it's not just people who are utilizing that airport every day. And we think Bob will do that. I get you, but I hope you understand where I'm coming from as well.
Yeah, I just, like I said...
You seem like a nice guy.
Yeah. Well, I'm, I am most of the time, but this, it just seems bizarre to me. I don't get involved in all this political stuff, and again, if the car's driving good down the road, why mess with it?
Thank you.
I understand that.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to address this board? Yes, round two.
Name and address, please. My name is Andy DeSweet. I'm a resident of Westville. Here, kind of on behalf of Region Flyers, that's a flight school out of the airport. And my, well, not mine, but our more curiosity was if there's a, I understand that the airport's owned publicly. I've been around there, I grew up literally on the other side of the airport, been around it my whole life, and I understand that it's a public airport. Our curiosities were if there is board changes or anything that's even going to stay the same... same, if there's a way that we can maybe have a voice in a discussion about qualifications, whether it's old or new, and that's, and if, you know, how it is to find out about those things, um, like you said, we understand that you, you want the airport to operate the best for the public, which is what we all want, I mean, we're, our business is based on helping the public, and we want that as well, and I don't know who, you know, we're not aware of any, uh, anybody, the, of the qualifications, I guess you could say, of the new person, how is it that we would be able to, you know, maybe even next time, get in the loop, is it something that we're able to do? I'm, we're not really all that sure how it works.
So that's, so out there they have a board, they have Kyle, who's the director, and the board has an attorney, I would start with the board and their board attorney and discuss, uh, whether or not that board wants to make recommendations to us or not, but, uh, to the Commissioner's Office when the board appointments come up, but that's, that's why there's a board, that's why there's an attorney, that's why there's a director, so that, uh, those lines of communication are open.
Okay, so the board is who would be notifying us of changes?
And we did make a public announcement that we were accepting applications for this position a few months ago, yeah.
Okay, do we, I mean, do the...
Kyle knows all that, I mean, Kyle's, Kyle's is the director of the airport, and he would be the one, he knows when appointments are coming up, the board knows when appointments are coming up, and if everybody's, if it's all running so great out there, I would think everybody would know that that's the central hub of what we're doing.
I'm not, I'm, I'm not here, I'm not here with this, with, okay, I'm here as a, as a...
As a user.
I'm more curious as a flight school, because, now, the owner of our flight school was in an unfortunate accident, couldn't be here, so I'm kind of here on his behalf as well. He did not know about anything until, uh, I believe a couple of weeks ago, two or three weeks ago, um, so as far as the public announcement goes, how is that, I mean, is there, is there letters that are mailed to the businesses on the airport, or...
No, it was in the paper, and it was on our website.
And, and when you're given these appointments, just so, and I don't expect you to understand because you, you, uh, you haven't been appointed, uh, but when you're given these appointments, you're, you're given the dates as to when your, your service term is. So he should have known better than anyone when his appointment was coming up, and let me ask you another thing, I'm one of three people who make those, that appointment, I didn't receive a letter from him that he wanted reappointed.
Well, I, I'm, I can't speak on, on the gentleman's being replaced.
Yes, yes.
I'm not speaking on his behalf.
Okay.
I don't, I'm not aware of any of it.
But as Commissioner Good pointed, or, or, Mr. McClure pointed out, is that, you know, there's, we have the board, the structure is, you have the board, Kyle is the executive director, Kyle answers to that board, the commissioners appoint that board, if there, if you have ideas and suggestions as to what you would see to, like, to happen out there, attend your board meetings and make those suggestions to your board, and have, you know, if it's a case where county, we need to get involved, then Kyle can bring that to us. We're not opposed to that at all, as a matter of fact, that's why we're there.
Does anyone on the board have to reapply or are you just...
No, they all have, what is that, Scott, what's yours?
They're all staggered terms.
Yeah, but you, you have to reapply when your, your, your service term is up, so he, like, as I stated, he better, the person serving it currently, the incumbent, should know better than anybody when that service term is ended, so they, they should know when they need to contact us and let us know they, they want to be reapp, uh, reappointed.
And more importantly, that it's up for debate to begin with, there's an appointment coming up, there may be one, I have to look at the schedule, there may be one next year this time, I'm, I'm not sure when the staggering is, but that's, that board knows, all those board members know their individual appointments, and Kyle is in the best position of all to know when all those things are, so that's, that's their, your best and first source of information is, is this board.
Yeah, you bring up very good questions, and, and again, as Commissioner, uh, Attorney McClure pointed out, because of the structure, the way it's structured, your best, uh, approach would be to attend your meetings, make your suggestions, and act, and, and let the board discuss those suggestions, because something, you know, it has to be vetted somewhere, um, we don't run an airport up here, so, uh, you could be suggesting something to me and I could have no clue whether or not it's doable. Let it be vetted there, and if it's something that the air, outside of the airport itself's purview to, to deal with, and you have to bring it here, then let Kyle bring it to us. You don't, you don't have to be a, you, you, as a commissioner, I don't have to go into that airport once a week to understand what it's supposed to do, okay? I, I, I understand what it's supposed to do.
I understand that, but...
And you have three commissioners here who are not going to micromanage somebody we're paying very well to run that service.
I understand, I don't want to be, Justin is here as a pilot, I'm here just asking questions per flight school.
No, you know, all of your questions were good, were good, I just, it just, we want you to know that if there's an issue, the issue ain't here, we're just, we're doing what we're supposed to do, there's not a single appointment that this board makes where it's on the hospital board or any other board, that it's an appointment for life.
Okay, thank you.
Okay?
You're welcome, I thought you were going to say something, I don't want to...
Nope, no, I was just letting Commissioner Big...
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to address this board? And with that, this meeting stands in recess.